Welcome to the city of Madison Heights, Michigan. Tonight is the regular council meeting of April 25, 2016. The time is 7:30 PM. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. And may we please begin with the roll call?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Present.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. If you're able, would you please rise for an invocation which will be given by Councilwoman Margine Scott and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Father and Creator, we ask that you give us the knowledge and authority to lead the city of Madison Heights forward. Keep us ever mindful that we are also responsible for the welfare of each person along the way. Grant us the right sense of compassion along with keen judgment to balance the needs of individuals with the needs of the city and those we exist to serve. Give us the courage and wisdom to lead with wise compassion for others. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We begin tonight's meeting with a few presentations. First is a very special one where we swear in police reserve officers.
Yes, Your Honor, we have Deputy Chief Palowski and Lieutenant Fecto here tonight.
Welcome, Deputy Chief.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to thank Steve Grluski and Dave Mento for joining the reserve unit. I appreciate their time and effort and personal money that they put into their equipment and time to go through the training process of the academy.
The next one.
We look forward to them working on the reserve unit. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the auxiliary services coordinator, which is Lieutenant Al Fecto. He would like to make a statement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The Auxiliary Services Division includes all the volunteer groups that the Madison Heights Police Department sponsors, including the Reserve Police Department, the Crisis Response Team, and the Police Explorer Post. The primary functions of the reserve unit includes assisting sworn officers as requested, checking vacation homes, providing patrols for schools and parks in the area, conducting crowd and traffic control as city and school functions, and delivering subpoenas for our detective bureau. Tonight, we swear in two new police reserve officers, Stephen Grluski and David Mento, as Deputy Chief just mentioned. Steve Grluski is currently a police service aide for Madison Heights. He's worked for our department for about four years now. He has an obvious interest in law enforcement and expressed an interest in volunteering within our community. So when he asked us to join the police reserve unit to volunteer in our community, we gladly accepted him. David Mento works at Royal Oak Ford, where he is a body shop advisor and writer. In the past, he was an auxiliary officer for Royal Oak, where he volunteered his time in that community. He heard about our program through another Madison Heights Police Reserve Officer, Chris Socia, and he asked to join our unit after that. So when he applied, we accepted him as well, and we're excited to have both of them join us. Both these men have just graduated from the Oakland County Police Reserve Academy on April 16th. That academy runs 125 hours and includes such topics as first aid, firearms, and criminal law. These two men paid their own way through the academy, bought their own equipment, and volunteered their time to reach the required training to complete the academy. Please join us in welcoming the two new police reserve officers, Steve Grluski and Dave Mento.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain and assist in the efficient administration of the affairs of Madison Heights, free from charge of control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of police reserve officer in the terms of your office for you to the best of your ability to help you then?
Yes. Thank you.
Can you stand?
Thank you. Thank you.
If anyone with the officers would like to take a picture with council, gentlemen, I don't know if you wanted to pose up here or take pictures later or now?
Who's taking the picture? Thank you.
Beautiful.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I may say something.
Yes, please.
It is quite a commitment. These gentlemen have to spend about between $2,000 and $2,500 to equip themselves, to volunteer. So they're paying to volunteer, which is a switch. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's a great point. Welcome to the reserve force, gentlemen. Thank you for your hard work. The next presentation tonight is a proclamation honoring Police Officers Memorial Week.
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Madison Heights Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Madison Heights. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Madison Heights Police Department has grown to be a modern and professional law enforcement agency that provides vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council call upon the citizens of Madison Heights and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe May 15th through the 21st, 2016 as Police Week. To commemorate police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that May 15, 2016 be observed as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Deputy Chief Palowski, will you accept this?
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Just one comment. I mentioned this to Deputy Chief Palowski and Lieutenant Fecto just before the meeting. It's four or five years ago, and I mentioned this to council also. I had the pleasure of happening to be in Washington, DC, the week of Police Officers Memorial Week, and it is one incredible spectacle. And if anyone ever gets the opportunity to be there that week, it's the same week each year in the middle of May. I mean, it's just an incredible outpouring of support for our police officers, those that were lost in the line of duty, those that were disabled, from just, I would say, from not only all across the country, but even from other countries. And it's really something to behold.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Moving on the agenda, approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item A, business licenses initial. We have two applicants. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make the motion to approve business license initial to Boender Custer LLC DBA. It's a century floor space, a floor cleaning service. Number two, ABC Supply Company, a building materials shop. Under business license temporary and seasonal. Number one, Harbor Freight Tools for outdoor sales. The next one is the Home Depot outdoor sales. All the requirements have been met by all the departments, so I make the motion to accept all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this item? Motion by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve business licenses initial A1 for Bender Custer LLC, A2, ABC Supply Company, and also under temporary seasonal 1, Harbor Freight Tools, and temporary seasonal 2, the Home Depot. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item B, public hearings, is one item for discussion tonight. Special approval 1602, proposed auto body shop at 1409 East Ten Mile.
Yes, Your Honor. Special approval is required to allow an auto body repair facility in the M1 Light Industrial District. The applicant proposes to use the existing vacant 2,880 square foot building for auto body repair, bump in paint. All aspects of the operation, with the exception of the repair vehicle storage, must be conducted completely inside the building. The plan includes the required six-foot-high masonry screen wall and obscuring gates to allow outside storage of vehicles awaiting repairs. In addition, the plan includes removal of a non-conforming driveway on Dy Street. The parking exceeds minimum ordinance requirements in the proposed hours of operation of Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan and all plan review comments have been addressed. Should council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended. Number one, all vehicles awaiting repairs must be stored inside the building or within the screened parking area. And number two, all repair work of any kind must be conducted within the building during all phases of work.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
First, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to discuss this item? Public hearing number one, special approval. Thank you. We'll close the public meeting. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the special approval for 1409 East Ten Mile Road, the proposed auto body shop, with the already announced contingencies in place.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? A motion made by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Clark, to approve special approval 1602 at 1409 East Ten Mile Road with the special conditions recommended by staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Before we get to meeting open to the public, is there anything on the agenda tonight that anyone in the audience wants to be brought forward? Okay. We'll go to meeting open to the public. If you'd like to address City Council, please come to the podium now, if you could be so kind. But it's your option to give your name and address for the record. And also, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27-368 Dartmouth. Our Friends of the Madison Heights Area Senior Citizens is going to be having its May 3, Tuesday meeting, that's May 17, at 7:00 at Wilkinson Middle School. It's going to prove to be exciting because we're going to have our elections then, and any member of our organization, vote for Gloria. And also, everybody in the public is welcome. It's an open-to-public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeremy Gilbert, 926 Tanglewood, County Commissioner, also. I'm here to, at the mayor's request, to report on the cleanup that we had at the Nature Sunday yesterday. We had a total of about 115 people. They came out to volunteer and help clean up the woods. We did a lot of jobs. I'm guessing at least $10,000 worth of work that paid staff what it cost to do the work. We put down wood chips all the way around the building, carried out a lot of old dead trees, raked leaves all the way along the fence lines. Thanks to Joe and his staff, they picked it up today. We appreciate that. And I'd particularly like to thank Mayor Hartwell and Councilman Clark for being involved. Second thing I wanted to mention was the Madison Heights Youth Assistance is holding its first fundraiser. It will be this coming Wednesday at the 27th of April from 4 to 7:00, and that's at the Plumbers Hall, which is right over here on Horace Brown Drive, 555 Horace Brown Drive. I also wanted to mention on the road resolution that I've been here before and talked about, which is a bipartisan program. It's going to committee, and I'm assured that it's going to pass, but we'll wait and see. And last thing I wanted to mention, it really, it was kind of bothersome when I went down Mulan the other day. I guess you're replacing water mains down Mulan, and all the trees were cut down. And I'm just amazed that it devastates the entire neighborhood by cutting down all those mature trees. And I understand that sometimes you have to do that to put the water main in. But the water main runs down one side or the other, and they're cutting down trees on both sides. Excuse me. And I'm just wondering if those will be replaced with mature trees once the water main project is finished.
Thank you. I think everyone's homework project should be to drive down Mulan Street tonight, and while they're at it, they should drive down Greg Avenue just to see the loose gravel. But yeah, there may be an opportunity to save other trees, just depending on what the project is, but it's not up to me at this point.
Okay. I would suggest that all the council members just look at how much it changes the neighborhood by cutting down all those mature trees.
Mr. McGilvery.
Drive down Mulan and take a look at it.
As I understand it, many of those homes are occupied by renters, and so the question remains, you know, whether the people living in those homes will then replant on their own initiative. I don't know.
Again, I mean, I understand in the past, my neighborhood was hit with the ash board thing, and they cut down all the trees in the neighborhood, and it made a devastating effect then. That was needed, and I understand that. But I'm not real sure where the need is here, so.
Your Honor, yeah, this was covered at the Neighborhood Roads meeting. It is part water main, Commissioner, you're absolutely right, but it is also road construction that's occurring on Mulan. And as we told the 100 people from the neighborhoods who were there that night in March, the city does not like cutting down trees. But we've learned the hard way that they do not survive the stress of road reconstruction, especially when you have, not just, it's not just that they're mature trees, it's the placement of those trees and the root system proximity to the curb and utilities in the road that just, they just cannot survive. And it's something we don't like to do. We're the bearers of bad news when we have those Neighborhood Road meetings, but we have to get the information across. And so it's a combination of water main and the road projects.
Then will that go all the way down to Quinder, then?
No, Your Honor, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
You betcha, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Aye.
I'm Mary Bush, 1117 East Hudson. I noticed my name on the agenda for later on, so I wanted to come and address the council and you, Mr. Mayor. To start with my passion, I'm a voracious reader, and I love books, and I love everything that writers have to contribute. And it has been my privilege to serve for many years now on the library advisory board. And my experience of our library, which a library is basically the intellect and the heart of the city when it comes to learning, and it's positioned for both Lamphier and Madison District Schools. So as a citizen of Madison Heights, I'm deeply pleased with the eBooks that are available and the electronic overdrive that we can get books at 2:00 AM in the morning if we want. And I appreciate the fact that we have books in Chinese, so that people in our community of Chinese descent can read novels in their own language. I am a little concerned that there was a survey done that showed that the physical condition of our library is wanting. And I took pictures of chairs with biohazard material on them. And just, it has been a frustration of mine. The largest frustration I have had with our library is the lack of participation in the 21st century social media. So Oak Park, Claussen, Troy, Royal Oak, all have got very active, beautiful, vibrant Facebook pages. And it has been for at least a year that I've been asking for something to be done that we can have this. And I understand it's in the 2016 goals. Just to give you all a little sense of it, I personally manage 6.8 million federal dollars on an annual basis, and I'm on a volunteer basis and admin on a Facebook page called Disabled Veterans Chapter 31. So I know a little something about what it takes to establish, maintain, and run a vibrant, acceptable, socially acceptable Facebook page. And yes, as Councilman Corbett has called me, a spirited lass, I will speak my mind about things. But at the same time, I've just been frustrated with the lack of progress that we've been able to make as a library advisory board. So with that said, I'm resigning my position as chair of the library advisory board, but I hope to continue to participate in my city because I am just so in love with our city of progress. And I know that we can continue to bring Twitter to filling the road holes and Facebook to having social groups for book clubs and promoting books and the Parks and Rec Committee and all of the activities that we do in this community. It's just so vital for us as the city of the 21st century to maintain that type of electronic presence. So with that, I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Please come up.
Hi, my name is Paul Sanders. I live down at 26433 Rialto Street, south of the high school. And I'm kind of here because of the high school. We have a beautiful high school. We have some really good schools here. And I understand it's a nice thing to have, like they had this weekend, the carnival. The only thing I'd like to say is Saturday night, it was okay. Sunday night, it was okay. But Friday night, I live a quarter mile away, whatever music they were playing, and I'm a guy of the 60s, I like rock and roll too, it was rocking my windows. It was really, really loud. I called the police to ask them just how loud it could be, and they said, "You all said it was all okay." They toned it way down Saturday night and Sunday night. I don't mind a little bit of music. I like music. But come on, that was really loud on Friday night. I'm glad the kids are getting an education. I think it's wonderful. I really believe in getting a great education, whether it's high school, college, go on and get a PhD, I don't care. But you got to get an education to get money nowadays. But they could turn down the music level that they had Friday night. Please, I live a quarter mile away, and I believe me, I know I'm an old fuddy-duddy, it was rocking my windows.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
So if you could, next year, if they keep it to the level that they had Saturday or Sunday, that was okay. Please.
May I say one thing?
Go ahead.
I agree. Late-night parties are very disruptive to the peace of our neighborhoods. But this family fest was exclusively a school event.
Okay.
Completely contained on school property. And I agree with you. Overall, the school's doing great things, and overall, this event was fantastic, great for the community. I implore you to speak with the school officials about this, so hopefully, if they bring this program back a year from now, they can learn from an issue like this.
Okay.
And if I see a school official, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll take your idea and be sure they hear about it.
Well, the charge of the schools was on Fox 2 Sunday morning, so I'm sure he's got time to listen to me, and it's only down the end of the street from me. But it was a quarter mile away, and it literally was rocking the windows. And come on, I want the kids to have a good time, and hey, if you graduated or you're getting through this year of schooling, have some party and have some fun. Come on, yeah, the rock windows a quarter mile away.
I agree. You're right.
So go ahead and talk with them next. And it's not, I'm not getting mad, it's just.
I know.
It was really loud, and I know it bothered me, and you're all going to chuckle now. You really concerned my dog, too. I know you're chuckling.
And on the funny note, Mr. Sanders, we all agree with you.
But it just, I'm glad they had a party. School's very great. You got to get an education, and it's difficult nowadays, and it's hard to stick with it. Because once you get done, you just keep going. And that's good, because pictures of dead old presidents come in really handy. And/or whoever the next lady will be on a $20 bill. They all come in handy. But you got to get an education, and I think it's nice they had a party and a get-together. But they don't have to be that loud, if they don't have to. So thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council tonight? Please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. My name's Troy. I live on West Barrett. I just moved here in November 2014. Honestly, I love the place, the sidewalks, the bike lanes on Lincoln, coming down on landlords, the time bank seems like a great idea. But I came for guidance and advice for change on two things. One, Monroe Park, the field in front of it, the school board has it up for sale. I went to the school board meeting last week along with many people on the block. Doesn't seem like anyone's happy about this. Al Morrison's kind of felt on his deaf ears just looking at what could be done, if anything, to prevent this. They were looking to build houses there. And also regarding, I was hoping to make a change to one of the ordinance regarding the open burning. I believe a supervised fire in an above-ground enclosed pit, whether it be for sale at Home Depot, Target, any store you go in Madison Heights. Same with any liquor store, 7-Eleven, you can buy wood, should be legal. It happened once or twice last summer where all of a sudden I got a fire truck and one of our Madison Heights brave is here pulling up in the driveway. And honestly, I was there, small, I got a fire extinguisher and a hose. Who doesn't like making hot dogs? Is there anything that could be done with either of these two?
Good question, Mr. Myers.
Your Honor, I can speak to the second one. The Fire Chief, City Attorney's Office, and I are working on an ordinance update now. It's not ready for council yet, but we know that there's an issue with fire pits and open burning that need to be addressed, and we're looking to incorporate something in the ordinance. But it's not quite ready for council yet, but you'll see it shortly.
Okay. Anything regarding the sale of Monroe Park? Was this anything, I'm not even sure if it'd be brought to your guys' attention?
It's not our property. Sure, I mean, the school and the school district and the city government interact, but I don't think the city has an official position on how the school deals with their property.
Okay.
One, Monroe Park, the field in front of it, the school board has it up for sale. I went to the school board meeting last week along with many people on the block. Doesn't seem like anyone's happy about this. Al Morrison's kind of felt on his deaf ears just looking at what could be done, if anything, to prevent this. They were looking to build houses there. And also regarding, I was hoping to make a change to one of the ordinance regarding the open burning. I believe a supervised fire in an above-ground enclosed pit, whether it be for sale at Home Depot, Target, any store you go in Madison Heights. Same with any liquor store, 7-Eleven, you can buy wood, should be legal. It happened once or twice last summer where all of a sudden I got a fire truck and one of our Madison Heights brave is here pulling up in the driveway. And honestly, I was there, small, I got a fire extinguisher and a hose. Who doesn't like making hot dogs? Is there anything that could be done with either of these two?
Good question, Mr. Myers.
Your Honor, I can speak to the second one. The Fire Chief, City Attorney's Office and I are working on an ordinance update now. It's not ready for council yet, but we know that there's an issue with fire pits and open burning that need to be addressed, and we're looking to incorporate something in the ordinance. But it's not, it's not quite ready for council yet, but you'll see it shortly.
Okay.
Anything regarding the sale of Monroe Park? Was this anything, I'm not even sure if it'd be brought to you guys' attention?
It's not our property. Sure, I mean, the school and the school district and the city government interact, but I don't think the city has an official position on how the school deals with their property.
Okay.
You could pull each one of us, I'm sure we have personal opinions, but I don't know if the city's on the record.
And Your Honor, just to add to that, there are no applications before us, before the city, the staff or the council currently regarding permits or anything like that.
However, you should know that Monroe Park, the improved western end, is city property.
Right. No, I know that's not going anywhere. But it's really the field everyone's fighting for, the green patch thing. Because I feel like every sector of Madison Heights has their own, you know, three vacant lot of green next to a park. And all of a sudden, this one's up for sale.
I have nothing to report. I'm not, we're not hiding the ball here. There's just nothing to report.
Would that be something you think, like, signatures would do, or just keep attending school board meetings?
Probably the property owner. I would take it up with the property owner. And as far as I know at this point, it's the school unless they sold it.
Okay. No. Thanks for your time, guys.
Would anyone else like to address City Council tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I haven't talked to you since you became mayor, so I'd like to say congratulations.
Thank you. It's nice to see you. Thank you.
My name's Doug Penny. My address is 28525 Region Court, Southfield. Some of you know me from Madison Heights Chamber of Commerce. I'm just following up on a couple of letters I sent everybody on the council. I'm with Community Graphics. I produce illustrated maps of the cities. Looking at possibly doing one of Madison Heights. Probably most of you have seen some of my work at one time or another. Originally talked to John Austin.
Mr. Penny, if you go to the mic, I'm sure the camera will not only pick up what you're showing us, but also the audio will be picked up.
Okay. Originally talked to John Austin was here, and he said he would like to do one, but he's gone now. I just thought we would see if you'd like me to develop one for the city. There would be no cost to you. When they're completed, they're given away free to the city residents and as well as donated to the city for you to use as you like. I probably, if I was doing it, probably work with Linda Williams and Jim Schaefer. And that's just basically it. I'd like to give you a couple posters.
Thank you. I will definitely consider it. I'll accept the information.
And the letter of endorsement, City Light, DPC.
Thank you, Doug. We'll review this. Have a good evening. Mr. Capizo, are you next? Welcome.
Jim Capizo, 863 Benoy. I just have a thing from a retired head water engineer of the Detroit Water Department on the rise and fall of Detroit's system, so I'm gonna give it to the city manager. And if he wants to provide a copy to anybody, then I'm sure he will. It's in a draft version, so it's still being worked on.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
What exactly is that, sir?
What exactly is that? A draft?
He writes sort of a history of the Detroit Water Department. They had a PE engineer ahead of it in like around 1970, and the city charter was changed. And that helped wreck the department. That's basically the history of what happened to it.
Who authored it?
Dennis Green, a retired head water engineer. So the water department has a freshwater side that you drink and the wastewater side, so he was the head engineer over the water side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capizo. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Meeting is open to the public. Okay, thank you. We'll close this portion of the meeting and go on to Item C, Communications. C1 from the Lamphier Schools, a request to waive the park fee for Civic Center Park.
Lamphier Schools has requested to use Civic Center Park to hold their special education preschool picnic on Friday, June 10th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, including the use of Pavilion C. The district is also requesting a waiver of the Pavilion and Damage Deposit fees. Staff and I recommend approval of the event subject to council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council approve the request of Lamphier Schools for the use of the Civic Park, Civic Center Park. I would grant in the motion the waiver of the fee, and it would be subject to compliance with all requirements, including those involving the insurance.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltes?
Second, please.
Any discussion on this item? A motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltes, to approve the request from Lamphier Schools to use Civic Center Park and grant the fee waiver request, subject to all requirements, especially including the council's adopted policy on insurance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next communication is regarding Ms. Mary Bush.
Library Advisory Board member Mary Bush has submitted her resignation from the board, effective immediately. Staff and I recommend the council accept the resignation and declare the seat vacant.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Bush, declare vacant the seat, and authorize the issuance of the appropriate thank you certificate.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this item? Thank you, Ms. Bush, for your service. The motion is made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to accept with regret the resignation of Mary Bush from the Library Advisory Board, to declare the seat vacant, and to authorize the issuance of any thank you letter or proclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on, Item D1, under Reports from the Deputy City Manager and City Clerk Regarding the 2016 Roads and Vehicles Ballot Proposal.
Yes, Your Honor. On March 28th, council approved the resolution and ballot language to send to the voters in August for the V3 Vehicle Millage and R3 Roads Millage. The next step in the process was to submit the approved language to the state of Michigan for review and approval. The state has come back, and as required by them, staff and I recommend that council approve a motion to amend Council Motion 1674, adopted at the March 28th City Council meeting, which approves the 2016 Roads and Vehicles Ballot Proposal Resolution by striking in Paragraph 4 at the state primary election and inserting at a special election held in conjunction with the state primary election. Your Honor, this is just a language cleanup. It's still proposed to be held in August as part of the primary.
Thank you, sir. What is the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I motion that City Council approve a motion to amend Council Motion 16-74, adopted at the March 28th City Council meeting, which approves the 2016 Roads and Vehicles Ballot Proposal Resolution by striking in Paragraph 4 at the state primary election and inserting at a special election held in conjunction with the state primary election.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion made by Councilwoman Scott, supported by Councilman Corbett, to approve the amendment to approve a motion to amend Council Motion 1674, adopted on March 28th City Council meeting, which approves the 2016 Roads and Vehicles Ballot Proposal Resolution by striking Paragraph 4, quote, "at the state primary election," and inserting, quote, "at a special election held in conjunction with the state primary election." All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Move on to Report D2 tonight from the DPS Director regarding a summer maintenance agreement.
Provided for council is the 2016 Summer Maintenance Agreement from the Road Commission for Oakland County, which covers 14 Mile, 12 Mile, and John R. from 14 to the drain. Under this contract, the city provides street sweeping, weed and grass mowing, and litter pickup along these county roads. This year, the Road Commission has increased the summer sweeping rate from $97 to $99 per curb mile, resulting in a slight increase of 0.9%, which is reflective of the county's current bids from its vendors. Staff and I recommend the council approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
I'd make a motion to approve 2016 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Is there discussion? Motion made by Councilman Clerk, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the 2016 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Report D3 from the police chief regarding an interlocal agreement with Oakland County for IT services.
The police department subscribes to Oakland County Clemis for report writing, e-citation, mugshot imaging, mobile data computers, live scan fingerprinting, and the Leeds Online Pawn Shop software. And the department accesses the law enforcement information network through Oakland County Clemis. The department has used Clemis for these functions for a number of years. In 2015, the city signed a similar agreement with Oakland County to provide IT services for online payments, local tax payments, web publishing, internet service, internet connectivity, email, health portal, over-the-counter payments, and data center use and services. Oakland County has requested a new agreement, which will cover all of these listed services, and add the Clemis services that are supplied by Oakland County to the department. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by the City Attorney's Office and would extend for a five-year term unless canceled earlier by either the city or Oakland County. Staff and I recommend the county approve the interlocal IT Clemis agreement in order to continue our services with Oakland County and Clemis.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for IT services, including Clemis.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
Second.
Very well. Is there any discussion? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Clerk, to approve the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for IT services, including Clemis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. There's nothing for us to discuss under E or F, so we'll move to Item G, Ordinances. First for discussion is an amendment to the Use of Tobacco by Minors ordinance.
On April 11th, City Council adopted on first reading Ordinance 2110, which prohibits the use or sale of tobacco products, vapor products, or alternative nicotine products by and to minors. Staff, the City Attorney's Office, and I recommend the council approve Ordinance 2110 on the second and final reading.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve Ordinance 2110 on the second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Just a, once again, I think I did it the last time, but I'll say it one more time, just a thank you to staff, the Attorney's Office, and Councilman Soltes down there for his work on this ordinance. It very much is appreciated. Very timely. That's all.
Great. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would just mention something I heard on the local news this morning, that they estimate that 13% of all high school students are using these products. Even a 4% to 6% in middle school are using these products. And one of the reasons, as we discussed on first reading at our last council meeting, was that the state governor vetoed a bill that would have made something similar to what we would be adopting tonight as a state law. And because the governor vetoed the bill, the Madison Heights City Council, if it approves it on second reading, is stepping in to plug the gap that the state's left relating to these products. The news report also indicated that in a very short time, this business of selling nicotine products has grown from a $6 million business in Michigan to a $180 million business in a very short time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve Ordinance 2110, which is an amendment to the Use of Tobacco by Minors ordinance. This will be final and second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. We'll move on to Item G2, Ordinance 2111, an amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance.
On April 11th, City Council adopted on first reading Ordinance 2111 to allow educational institutions the ability to keep domesticated hens. Staff, the City Attorney's Office, and I recommend the council approve Ordinance 2111 on the second and final reading.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council adopt Ordinance 2111, Amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance, Domestic Hens, on second reading.
Very well. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings, please.
There's a gentleman in the audience, has his hand up.
Mr. Sanders, I'll entertain a question or comment. Could you come to the, I'm sorry, could you come to the microphone just so people at home know what we're discussing? This is in regards to the Domestic Hen Ordinance.
Why you want to refer to what I have on hand, but you wouldn't ask? I'm just asking. I'm trying to be good, too. So what are you gonna do with the minors that are caught smoking? What are you gonna do with them?
It'll be treated just as if they're caught with tobacco products. It's putting it under that same regulatory scheme as tobacco.
So basically, nobody should sell it to them.
Mr. Mayor? How is that addressed, please?
What do you do with kids that you catch smoking cigarettes? What are you gonna do with them?
The ordinance also prohibits possession. So it's just like minor and possession of alcohol. It's treated minor and possession of tobacco products for minors under the age of 18.
So what do you do?
Well, we have...
I'm not trying to be a smart ox. Almost every kid I knew when we were kids in the olden days tried having a cigarette. So what are you gonna do with the kids?
The ordinance provides that the first offense is considered a civil infraction, punishable by a fine of $100. And a second offense, I think, is $500. Civil infraction, which means it's only punishable by fines and costs, no jail time.
So you're gonna fine a kid $100 because he has a cigarette?
These vape shops are also selling vaporizers where kids take marijuana that's covered with wax to intensify the high, and they're being used with highly addictive products in order to get as much THC in their system as possible. So it's not just, it's concerns about being addicted to nicotine, but also concerns about kids using them for other reasons.
But you said it's an amendment that the Use of Tobacco by Minors ordinance, it's a cigarette. And you're gonna charge a kid, if you catch a kid with a cigarette, he's gonna get a $100 fine?
That's the current law under the age of 18, anyway.
Is that state law, or is that just what we've come up here?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
City ordinance. State law, state law hasn't passed a statewide statute to deal with this issue.
How often has that actually been enforced?
It would be enforced starting 10 days from council's approval of the ordinance.
Okay. You got enough money to pay for the lawyers and everything?
We're supported by volunteers on occasion to do, I don't want to use the word sting, but yeah, a sting, where we will test the businesses to see if they honor these laws.
Okay, so I can understand...
So it is enforced. It's not a empty hollow grandstand.
You know, the business is selling it, or anybody's selling this stuff, but I'm wondering, what are you doing with a young kid that has a cigarette? You're saying it's a $100 fine. It's a lot of money for a little kid. They're not gonna think that's a nice thing. I wasn't perfect as a kid, but I've done pretty good ever since.
Mr. Mayor? That's why it's not a criminal, the first offense is not a criminal, it's not a criminal record, it's just a civil infraction. And hopefully that, I mean, that...
Oh, I think you're hoping...
Under many laws...
It's up to you.
That's why it's not a criminal, the first offense is not a criminal, it's not a criminal record, it's just a civil infraction, and hopefully that, I mean, that-
Oh, I think you're open-
Under many laws-
It's up to you. It's opening a big can of worms over a kid having a cigarette, considering that's what started America, but go ahead. I understand you don't want them doing a whole bunch of drugs, and I agree with that, but $100 fine for getting caught with a cigarette, and you're a kid under the age of, what, 21 or 18?
Well, like Mr. Sherman said, we're not changing anything about cigarettes. We're discussing vapor products and alternative nicotine products to minors.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Scott.
If I have a question of the City Attorney. Is the language termed about regarding the $100 fine, is that something that is mandatory, or is it subject to?
That's the maximum penalty that could be imposed by the court if the person was found responsible of the civil infraction. Actually, it would be up to the judge if there was a contested hearing on it, and up to a maximum of $500 for a second or subsequent offense. The part that I didn't, I don't think I made clear was that it relates not only to the use of tobacco products, but these vaping devices and edibles, people are eating the nicotine, and the purpose of the vaporizer is to get more nicotine into the system, and that's what we're concerned about when it relates to the young people.
And Mr. Mayor, if, I'm sorry, are you-
The only thing I was going to add, Councilwoman Scott, is that we also require the businesses, any businesses that open in Madison Heights that sell these products, to post signs in an appropriate place so that it's understood that this is not supposed to be sold to minors under 18.
Counsel, just a reminder, we've already voted on the tobacco ordinance. The present motion on the table is regarding the Amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance, the domestic hens, for educational purposes.
Right, but Mr. Sanders was not called on when his hand was up, so I'm sorry. I have to ask for parliamentary procedure here. We're addressing the problem he was not able to address at that time.
Okay.
So do we need a motion for him, for us to be addressing this issue, even though it's not in the current order?
No, I'm not going to require that formality.
Okay. I was concerned, and I did want to offer the input, that when this ordinance was published, the possibility of having this ordinance established, we were immediately contacted by Kimberly Heiser representing the Madison Heights Family Coalition, that that was a very deep concern about that, the coalition, because they deal with a lot of preventive measures, and they deal a lot with peer pressure, and helping the students not to come to threats to their safety and their protection. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the table at the moment was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Clark, to adopt ordinance 2111 which is an amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance regarding domestic hens on second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. Next item for review is ordinance G3, 2113, an amendment to the Water Ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor. On April 11, the City Council approved on first reading ordinance 2113 to change the mandatory disconnection of water for non-payment to a permissive disconnection by substituting the verb may for shall. Staff, the City Attorney's Office, and I recommend the council approve ordinance 2113 on the second and final reading, and I would note that as requested by council, an alternative ordinance has been provided for consideration based on the request for a version that changes shall to shall not, but with listed exceptions.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Saltus.
I want to make a motion for the alternative ordinance where it says it changes the shall to shall not with listed exceptions, please.
A motion to approve? Oh, yeah, okay, I'll accept that. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett? Support? A discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I was just going to ask if either the attorney or Ben might just briefly discuss the exceptions, number one, in general terms, and number two, what had been, my concern, was whether or not distinguishing between classes, commercial versus residential and so on, is a problem in this ordinance.
Your Honor, if I could, maybe I could start by listing the exceptions as councilmen requested. Basically, the exceptions are when consumers are substantially delinquent in their payments, and that means two or more billing periods in arrears, and they're not participating in an approved assistance plan, which would include the RAP program that was just recently adopted by council. Secondly, when the premises have been abandoned or is vacant, when the premises is subject to foreclosure, demolition, and/or fire department action, when the premises is subject to suspected criminal activity and/or police department action, when the premises is subject to leaks, broken pipes, runoffs, flooding, or other equivalent circumstances, or when emergency situations occur, and this incorporates a number of other sections where it talks about disconnection, meaning like water use restrictions such as a boil water alert, wasting of water, irrigation restrictions, which is another part of the ordinance, tampering with the system, unapproved or improper cross connections with the public water supply, and that's something that's directly regulated by the state, protection from water supply contamination, and other violations of Chapter 29 of the code. Another exception is when unreasonable means of collection have failed, and finally, when the health, safety, and welfare of the residents require such action being taken as determined by the city manager or designees and subject to notification of council. So in general terms, Mayor and Council, those exceptions were discussed by staff, the assistant city attorney and I, and we felt that if council wanted to go this option with the ordinance, that that would be a fairly inclusive list that we would be able to use to administer the program. So I think the second question had to do with classes of customers.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
We decided against differentiating between different classes of customers because we were concerned about, you know, the possibility of an equal protection argument if we were to do so.
Well, that was my concern either way you work it, but, so it just simply applied across the board then without distinction?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? My question, oh, please.
Just wanted to say that a couple weeks ago when we discussed this, changing from shall to may, to me, gave the city too much wiggle room in the future. You know, a lot of what we have to do is protect against what will happen decades from now when none of us are sitting here, and this amendment, in this particular version, is not only clean, but it has a very clear understanding of what particular and specific items have to take place for water to be shut off. And let's remember, this is water. This is a necessity for living, so we have to make sure that we are clearly spelling it out, and there is absolutely no ambiguity at all, in which cases there may be water shut off. So I think staff did a great job in addressing the concerns that a couple of us discussed two weeks ago, and spelling out this version of the ordinance amendment that I think is not only clear, but will also protect us in the future against, you know, any potential, I guess, misreading or misinterpretation of the ordinance.
Thanks. I agree with everything you just said. My only question is, this ordinance amendment, wasn't it proposed from the Great Lakes Regional Water Authority so we could then participate in the water residential assistance program? Would this, would the alternate ordinance still fit in that scheme so our residents can apply to the RAP?
Your Honor, you are correct that one of the RAP program requirements is that we don't shut off water for non-payment, and we believe that this allows us to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I was just going to say, and I think the strength of the ordinance with the change that Mr. Saltus had recommended, was in the changing to the word shall not. I mean, that establishes a presumption in the ordinance, and I think that carries through the exceptions. That being said, we assume you're not going to shut off unless you hit a much higher standard, so I think it was good work and good foresight by all involved. Thank you.
And Your Honor, just one more thing. That condition is actually the very first one where it says that they are not participating in an approved assistance plan, so that covers us with RAP.
Mr. Mayor? I agree with all my colleagues here today. I'm proud that this came up with the city manager constructing this, and I'm voting on more of a philosophical, but as well as practical, and that's why I'm for this.
Great. Do we know approximately how many of our water consumers are delinquent, and what the possible dollar value of delinquent water bills are right now in the city of Madison Heights?
Mr. Mayor?
Is that even something we can ascertain?
We had a, yeah, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, the notes I saw, it was almost three-quarters of a million dollars of, 770,000 of late water bills.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, don't forget that the majority of that money will eventually be collected by the city irrespective of the delinquency of the individual. Eventually, the county will reimburse and buy the note. So there's a delay, certainly, and you don't like to see that in your budgeting, but the fact of the matter is very little of that money will the city ever get stiffed for, so, which is another argument in favor of the ordinance, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, from what I calculated, it was over 1,240. I took some of that list and kind of drove by some of the homes, just ordinary working families, you know? I mean, it was just, it wasn't something that stood out that distinguished those homes from any other home, so to me, it's just ordinary people trying to get by.
Well said. Any further discussion? It's a motion by Councilman Saltus, supported by Councilman Corbett, to approve the alternate version of ordinance 2113, specifically the one that has, changes shall to shall not, amending the water ordinance on second reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. There's no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move on to minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the April 11, 2016 meeting?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of April 11, 2016 as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the regular city council meeting minutes from April 11, 2016 as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes. We'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Let's see, first on the list will be a mayor's appointment, so I nominate Carrie Valmassey to fill a four-year term on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the DDA, a term to expire approximately June 19, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move to confirm your very forgiving appointment of Carrie. She's the one that nearly-
Oh, you're right.
Not to bring up old subjects, sir.
I blacked out that memory.
Yeah. Yeah. Very kind of you under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, let's see. No discussion, so we'll move to vote. All in favor of appointing Carrie Valmassey to a four-year term to the RDA slash DDA, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It passes. Congratulations, Carrie. Are there any other nominations to boards and commissions tonight? Seeing none, executive session, there's not, there is not an executive session scheduled tonight, so before I adjourn, I'd ask if there are any closing comments from City Council, and I'll begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just a reminder, we're at the libraries at Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. If any resident would like to stop by to discuss a matter involving the city, happy to have you stop by. That's all this evening.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I want to take a moment to recognize our mock council members sitting in the audience. As many of you are aware, we initiated, I guess, a call for interested students, and our official mock council meeting is next week, but the students are in attendance tonight to watch this extremely vibrant and lively debate take place. I apologize, everybody, but what I wanted to do is to take a quick moment to read portions of some of the essays that they wrote to participate in the program. And so if you'd be willing, Your Honor, I'd just take like five minutes to run through these. So I'm totally going to butcher these names, so I apologize in the back. I'm going to try to sound some of these out. So we've got Autumn, is it Boucher?
Yes.
Boucher, awesome. So Autumn had a great quote in here. She said that "I believe that our city council has great things in store for us, but it's the people's rights to act on those decisions as well." Big things are happening right now in our community. I thought that was a really great statement. Emma Green talked about working as a, working in our elections department, I think as a, was it?
Student election inspector.
Student election inspector, and she talked about that, and she said, "Being a part of it and seeing the friendly faces of the city come through to cast their vote presented me with a clear view of the importance of democracy, even on a, quote, 'small' city Vanessa Cadry, and I hope I got that right, Cadry, right? Vanessa Cadry wrote about her father's experience when he came to one of our city council meetings, and this one really touched me, and I hope it touches all you. She said that "When my dad came back from the meeting, he was shocked. He kept repeatedly saying how polite the people were, how they listened to his concerns and addressed all of them. He was shocked at the hospitality of our city's people. He was shocked about how they had refreshments for him. My dad's never been treated with that kind of respect from government. He wasn't born here, and the government back home was incredibly corrupt and didn't care about its citizens. He was so happy when he got home. He kept telling us how the city members shook his hand and actually listened to his concerns. Ever since then, I've had a big respect for the city." Thank you for sharing. Alyssa Cott says that "Our local government makes a bigger impact on us than people realize. The government is in charge of numerous things, including speed limits, funding our schools, making sure we have a decent amount of emergency workers, and they set in control rules for our local businesses." I think that definitely sums it up perfectly. Mina Unit?
Yes.
Half-right? Yeah. Mina said that "Local government to me is kind of the stage crew behind a Broadway show." I hope that Broadway show is Hamilton, right? Stage crew behind a Broadway show. They manage everything behind the scenes. Although I do not always physically see them working, I know they're doing important things as far as decision-making, production, health, security, maintenance, et cetera. One thing I love about my local government is that they always get involved in the community as far as giving back whenever and wherever they can." A great metaphor. And please say Hamilton, right? Finally, George Youssef. George says that "We need our local government because they're what keeps our city from falling apart. If we did not have speed limits, there would be twice as many car crashes as there is now. The city of Madison Heights is well protected with all the policemen and firefighters that are on duty, and I am affected by the local government because they are the people that have kept our city great for 60 years." Very good job. I just want to take a moment to congratulate you all. I can speak for my colleagues and the staff to say welcome. We are excited to sit side by side with you next week, or not next week, next meeting, two weeks from tonight, and have you run through the meeting just like we did. You're going to have that opportunity, and for those watching, these students are also going to have the opportunity to tour our city departments and spend an entire day with staff, getting the behind-the-scenes view of exactly how this city is run. And a side note, about 15 years ago, I participated in this same program, and so I can speak from personal experience how impactful it can be, so I truly applaud staff for doing everything that they've done to set this up, and I once again congratulate our students. It's going to be a really fun time, much more fun than this meeting, I can guarantee that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gettings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank the rec. department for their nice job they did on the fun run 5K a couple weeks ago. Joe and his staff, Kirby and Sakina in the rec. department, they had about 140 runners, Joe, somewhere in there? 250, I'm sorry, but it turned out to be a good day, and everybody seemed to have a good time. Thanks for the good job.
Thank you. City Attorney Larry Sherman?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Just one item, Your Honor. I do want to give out some information on the RAP-
I do want to give out some information on the RAP program. I know they're gearing up for a May start, and it is first come, first served. You'll find information on our website and social media, but the contact is directly through RAP if you're, if you think you're interested or eligible, and their number is 313-386-9727. That's 313-386-9727, and that's for the Water Residential Assistance Program, or you can go online to www.wainmetro.org/rap. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, Cheryl Prince?
No, no comments this week. Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
Oh, one thing. I was down Mulan, and it is devastating to see all those trees gone, but then you look at it, I'm not sure how wide that right-of-way is. Five foot maybe? Six at the most? To plant, they should have never planted those trees there to begin with, because they're just too big and too huge. It upsets the water supply, the drainage, the sidewalks, it'll raise them up, the street, and hopefully we can do something to start something, but don't put a, a tree that's going to get that big in there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to again reiterate, I think, is... No, he's not here, but our city commissioner, Gary McGelvery, mentioned the fact that youth assistance will be having a fundraiser. It's not only a fundraiser, but it's kind of like an orientation to what is youth assistance is all about, and how it's changed, and the changes they've gone through, and input from the community as to what can be done with our youth, the needs that, that people would bring for the community. Again, it's Wednesday, April 7, 27th, this Wednesday, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's at the Plumbers Local Union Hall, number 98 on Horace Brown Drive. So please stop by. You don't have to make a donation, but we would appreciate any help you could give us. There will be light refreshments provided, and you'll be able to discuss and hear about what's going on with the youth in the community, and which ways you can get involved. Also, I wanted to reiterate the fact that I wanted to thank the Madison School District for bringing back, if you want to call it that, the carnival this year. I know my grandson went a couple of days and was delighted and said he had a great time. It was handled very well. So I want to thank the Madison District for bringing that back to the community, although I hope they will tone down that noise. Yeah, I think, yeah. But that is something that they should hear and consider for discussion. I wanted to also recognize the fact that Lamphier High School will be having its spring production. It's a musical comedy entitled "The Addams Family," and we're talking about the ones that were on TV with Lurch and Gomez and Marchisha and Wednesday and et cetera. So it's a, a great production, it's a musical, so there's, it's kind of like what happens after Wednesday grows up and becomes marriageable, and that's the only clues I'm going to give you. But it is a comedy, you will enjoy it. The tickets are still available, you can get them at Lamphier High School, or you can come that night, hopefully they'll still be available. The cost is $12 for adults and $7 for seniors or students. The doors open at 6:30 and the play begins at 7:00, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week, April 28th, 29th, and the 30th. And I would also like to thank the Lamphier District because, again, they have opened up the play to the seniors in Madison Heights. It's for everybody in Madison Heights, and they will not only serve them a delicious lunch, but they will then be treated to see the play at no cost. So it's a great activity for the seniors, and we appreciate what they do for us. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Councilman Saltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's that time of year, it's a little earlier, but the last two years, we went to the state Capitol, we took the seniors on a bus trip, about 30, and it was a great time each time. So we're doing it again, May 11th. I know that's coming up quickly, but again, it's, it's free for seniors. They don't have to pay a dime for anything, they'll get a box lunch, they'll get transportation. What it is, is that there's a, it's older Michigianian Day, so there's legislators out there, you know, we can meet them, there's speeches going on, there's thousands of, of seniors out there and advocates. Again, it's all free, free ride, free lunch. We're going to meet at the senior center on 9:00, so please come. I know it's short notice, but I just found out about it myself. And if you're interested, you can call me, it's 248-219-6381. We'd love to have you. Each year, there's about 30 new seniors, and most of them have not been in the Capitol, so when they get in there, it's, it's a great experience for them. Somebody on the house floor, we sit in the gallery in the house floor, they announce them, and, and it's real exciting for them. Second, I got a few things. Second, I came across this Woodside newspaper. It's a church, I guess over in Troy, and they are having a 2016 Life Impact Summit to focus on human trafficking. They will unleash the astounding facts regarding the rise of human trafficking worldwide. It's a three-day event scheduled April 29th through May 1st, and will present awareness on this heinous, heinous, excuse me, heinous crime through testimony of actual victims and organizations, whose goals are to eliminate human trafficking in their communities and save missing children. So I'm going to try and make one of those days, but I thought I'd announce that. One, this other article that I found in the Gazette in Troy, I had breakfast with my son, so that's why I was interested in the grab this. There is Peter Marwa, and he talks about, it's entitled "It's Time for Business to Pay." And it's something that I'm, in fact, I'm passionate about and that I've spoke out about it, that I, I just feel the inequality that, here in America, and I just want to take just a few minutes and, and kind of go over a little bit of stats. I apologize, I, right now, I kind of feel the burn, and I want to talk. How I see it is, the first step, there's numerous, I know, numerous corporations with profits paying no taxes. Statistically, there's 1.6 million corporations in the United States in 2012, 70% pay no federal income tax. So I didn't have time to look up all 1.6 million of them, so I picked three. General Electric, that's a good one, 2014, a profit of 5-point billion, $5.8 billion, and over the four years, had a negative tax rate of 4.3. The CEO of GE, Jeff Emletz, if I pronounce this, I'm sorry, total compensation in 2014 was valued at almost $19 million. Prudential Financial, that's the second one, 2014, they made a profit of $3.5 billion, but over four years, they had a negative tax rate of 4.6. The CEO, John Strangfeld, ridiculously made $16.7 million, 2015, that's one person. Last, Ty Warner Cable, 2014, profit $4.3 billion, paid no federal tax. The Glenn Britt CEO pocketed over $14 million in 2013. So I'm trying to paint a picture here real quick. The next piece of the puzzle is the good old politics. Prudential, campaign contributions, 2014, $1.1 million. Lobbying effort, $8.3 million. Ty Warner, campaign contributions, 2014, $1.3 million. Lobbying, $3.3 million. GE, campaign contributions, 2014, $4 million in one election cycle. Lobbying about $16.2 million. So if you start to connect the dots, you'll see what such a corrupt system, and I'm glad that the youth is here today. I mean, I, you really need to take a look at this, but instead of talking about these billion-dollar systemic corruption, the conversation throughout the nation, right, is about poverty, and why aren't people paying their water bill? It's a basic human right. They have no billion-dollar corporate profits, they have no billion-dollar unethical lobbying group for them, they have no billion-dollar campaign contribution rigged for them, nobody will speak up for them except us, and that's why I'm glad that the council members and I voted for that, to not turn it off. I think that they're just average, hard-working, decent human beings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Saltis. Thanks to everyone who joined us. Special welcome to the high school students who will be going through the mock city council process. I'm sure you got a flavor of, of the, the varying ideas and positions of this city council. It's a seven-member city council, and each, each council member brings really unique skills and life experience to the job. You probably got a taste. Councilman Dave Saltis, who just spoke. Clearly, Dave is an advocate for the downtrodden. He speaks for children and seniors and the disabled, and his ideas are always region thinking, and how our actions affect others. Councilwoman Margene Scott, she's Mrs. Madison Heights. She's our, our local historian, she always has a camera, but for years, she's reminded us of the importance of the history of our city and how our past actions will affect our current state of mind and our future plan. But Margene Scott, she has varying interests. She believes in youth sports, she advocates for family issues, she's just a really smart person. Councilman Rich Clark is a former police reserve, and he has a lot of really special projects. Rich really believes in parks. He was cleaning up the nature center last weekend. He also really believes in the independence of businesses and letting, giving businesses their space to make money and to hire people. And he also supports youth sports. Councilman Bob Geddings here. Wave, Bob. Bob's a city retiree with the recreation department for how many years?
27 and 35 summers full-time, I mean, summers.
I, Bob is the local historian for all local sports. He'll tell you who won the wrestling match in 1975, but he also knows the rule, the rulebook of every sport you could imagine. He quizzes me on the baseball rules all the time. But Bob Geddings, Councilman Bob Geddings, has devoted his life to sharing his love of recreation and reminding people of how important the outdoors are and physical activity. Whether you're physically able or not, just the importance of being together outdoors, that's, that's Bob Geddings' mission. Mayor Proton Mark Bliss, who many of you know. Him and I are newer to council, but with Bliss, you see what you get. He's an innovator. He's taught us about 21st century social media. He, his idea was to bring, fill a pothole on Twitter, which is pretty exciting. Mark, Mayor Proton Bliss, he wants to make government transparent, accessible, efficient, and creative, and I think every meeting, you'll see Mr. Bliss come up with some creative ideas. And Councilman Bob Corbett on the end, I consider him the dean of the council. If you need any technical advice, go to Councilman Corbett. He's an expert on zoning and planning. He understands city finances and property values really well, better than anyone. But also, a really special project of his, he fought harder than anyone to save the library and to pass the library financial package, and I know that's a passion of his, especially that he holds office hours in the library. So this council has a lot of different ideas, and I think you'll notice that we're a team, we work well together, we have our bad days, we say stupid things sometimes, but in the end, we get together. This whole is so much greater than the sum of its parts, and so I can't wait to see how you work together and your creative ideas, because you'll bring a lot of inspiration to me and I'm sure my, my friends on city council. So with that, have a good night, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'll see you next time.